Board members, I want to clarify that there is a conviction the committee would have an opportunity between first and second readings to consider these things.
Right, that's what I'm asking.
And that's fine, I think it's on the record that the committee take that as their advisory.
Anything else?
The other concern, both of these are related to limiting the board members' ability to function in their capacity to represent the people who elected them. So go to Policy Code 2220, call the official school spokesperson. I'm just concerned this policy, if the committee can look at this too, that it could be interpreted as trying to limit the board members' ability to talk to the public as well as the press.
Well, the board can really only have one spokesperson. We can't have seven spokespeople running around making separate statements, so I think it's important that we kind of designate as to who's going to make the statement.
Right, and I think that's been understood, that the board chair does speak in the official capacity, but there are other instances, like after the last board meeting, a reporter, I think, asked us all our opinion about an issue. So I'm afraid this could be construed as keeping us from answering those sorts of questions. I just want to make sure that it's worded properly, that, you know, we are allowed to talk not only to the press but to the public as a board member.
I understand.
So those are the two things I want the committee to look at.
Okay, anything else? Any other board member comments?
And I want to ask, because you asked me to delay my motion and I didn't know when I was supposed to bring that up again.
Is there any more questions about the board's operation, serious details of policies? Okay, under the business, I have something that I would like to bring up. I would like just to make a motion to clarify our board directives and board member requests for information. Can I get a second?
I don't know where you're going with that. Mr. Sazemore, can I get it, Ms. Jackson?
Thank you.
I apologize, I'm a little getting late. I'm going to try to read this as quickly as I can.
Bob, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we have a policy that we have to, any written material has to be submitted seven days in advance to the board, and this was not presented to me or to the board.
Well, I just made a motion and had a second because I could clarify board directives and board member comments, and I had a second. So I'm going to continue.
I think you're ready, Mr. Campbell, to clarify.
I'm happy, let me clarify, because I'm happy to. Mr. Chairman, if that's the objection, you can take this back up. All this is, is a written document of what you're about to say to help board members. Board members are never required to put their verbal comments in writing, it doesn't have to do with convenience, but if that's the objection, you can take it back up. I think it's good for convenience of board members to be able to see what you're now working on.
Okay, hand it back to him.
We're going to make sure we're keeping.
Hand it back.
Now, the board can, we want to keep them.
I said that, because he clarified this is your verbal comment.
Hand it back to him.
Do you want to add, Mr. Chairman? Okay.
All right, I've now been the board chairman for a year, and obviously we'll be electing a new chairman next month, so whether it's me or whether it's someone else, I think this is something that Mr. Bryant touched on at the last meeting, and I've had other people that attended our meetings say something to me about this also. And so I've been in the effort to try to improve as the board chair and to improve our meetings and try to make them any shorter. I thought that I would put this together to hopefully help us all out. So I'm going to read this, and "The Board of Education is charged with the general oversight and supervision of the school system. We set policy and oversee the day-to-day operations and management of the schools under our administration. Just like any large organization, this board hires a superintendent to act as CEO and to operate the schools. Under our Code of Ethics, we delegate authority for the administration of the schools to the superintendent. We do not and cannot micromanage the running of our school systems. The opinions of each elected official on this board are important. However, decisions on when and how the administration will spend its limited time and resources on issues or ideas are controlled by board action. As an individual board member, I have no right to require the superintendent or administration to spend significant time responding to an issue or idea that is not supported by a majority of this board. This content is basic to our democracy. To balance these contents, our board does the following. First, board members' concerns and requests for information are directed to the superintendent rather than individual employees of the central office. Referring issues to the superintendent also includes any and all complaints or concerns regarding school system employees or students. Employees and students have confidentiality rights, and the superintendent must be provided with any information the board member has to enable an investigation. Second, the board through its meeting agenda allows board members to suggest that specific issues be considered by this board and addressed or researched by the superintendent and administration through board directives. That process works as follows. Board directives are requests for the superintendent to review and/or research an issue and make a recommendation to this board, if needed, at a subsequent meeting of the board. In accordance with Board Policy 201, board directives must be submitted to the superintendent's office seven days in advance for inclusion on the agenda. Board directives must comply with Policy 201 to be considered at a meeting. Board directives are not motions for immediate action on any issue. When a board directive is proposed on the agenda, it must be simply stated without giving detailed justification. A board directive must receive a second and a majority vote to permit consideration at the next regular meeting. No substantive discussion of the merits of the directive will be permitted when the directive is initially proposed. If the directive is approved for consideration by a majority of votes, it will be added to the next regular meeting agenda as an action item for further consideration by the board, along with any recommendation for the superintendent the superintendent may allow to make. Directives that do not receive a second or do not receive a majority vote will not be considered. Issues presented as board directives which failed to receive a second or a majority vote may not be reasserted in the absence of some significant change in circumstances, and the superintendent and administration shall not spend time or resources on the proposed directive unless otherwise necessary for the administration of our schools. If a board member believes that a critical issue is time-sensitive and requires immediate attention, he or she should notify the chair and superintendent immediately so that appropriate action can be taken by the superintendent and or the Board of Education. I realize that I have made mistakes as the board chair, and I think that this goes a long way in hopefully addressing some of my shortcomings as the board chair. And so I wanted to put this together and read this to you guys, because I think it's important for the issue of transparency, that board members, members of the public, have time to look at the issues that we are considering ahead of time, and the superintendent and staff have time to prepare for those such requests. And so that's all I have to say.
Mr. Chairman, was this a, you made this motion under new business, is it a motion to take some kind of action, or is it just your recitation of what you understand the practice to be, or what?
Since what you said is the board directives is under agenda items.
Right.
So this is the chair's recitation of what that agenda item means, how it works. This board is free to incorporate this in policy. This board is also free to operate this way under the agenda item of board directives. So if the board member wanted to, you could amend the motion to have it actually incorporated in policy and will be brought back and rehearsed at a reading, but it's basically a clarification of how that agenda item tended to work. And the difficult agenda item, I think, in the beginning, it was implemented different ways, and the chairman wanted to clarify how it worked.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak about that thing? I seconded your motion without knowing where you were going with this, and I appreciate the explanation from both you and Mr. Campbell. Board directives appeared on the agenda when I was the chair. They appeared on the agenda when I was the chair simply by my placing them on the agenda. It was, there wasn't a vote, there wasn't a policy, there wasn't a procedure. I didn't expect it to be a controversial thing. I amended the agenda and included them, and we operated under that policy and procedure for, or we operated under that agenda item with pretty much this explanation that I gave whenever I was the chair, and then Mr. Reiner became the chair and that modified, he modified that a little bit, and then things have changed slightly. With that said, during that period of time, I know that a variety of questions have been raised about whether the directives should remain on the agenda, the policy and procedure of how we go about that, and in those discussions, it came a number of times, there was going to question of what policy or procedure brought about for directives. And really, there was none. So I think that if we are, if this board is going to continue to have board directives on the agenda, then there needs to be an implementation of a policy. Now, wording may be a little lengthy here, but it is very explanatory as to what the process is. I'm not going to say whether I think there should or should not necessarily be board directives, although I thought that there should be initially, and quite frankly, I think it's beneficial to the process. But I think if, I'm going to amend, I'm going to ask the chair amend his motion to make this a, to ask the administration to draft a policy with regard to this so that there is clarity as to whether this is to be an agenda item or not. And if it is, what are the guidelines for that so that there's not question about it in later meetings?
Yeah, I would like to say this is a direct contradiction of what you put in this policy for us, for you to make a motion tonight without giving us any advance warning. It seems like there's one set of rules for some people and another set of rules for other board members, and I have just spoken about how this board seems hell-bent on limiting our ability as elected officials to do our duty and to express concerns from our constituents. So I mean, I oppose this completely. In fact, I feel like if I come to the next meeting, why don't you say, "Halt Hitler?" This is ridiculous, this is limiting us. We can make a motion anytime during the meeting. You are just, you know, slapping the face of our constituents when you do this every time. You have already put in place procedures where the superintendent is established as a gatekeeper and that he doesn't even have to respond to questions from board members within 48 hours of a meeting. These are just adding more procedures to limit our ability to ask questions, to make motions now. You know, what's the next, why do we even need to exist? We are supposed to be a check and balance system. It's supposed to be democratic. Not, we are not supposed to be a rubber stamping board. We are supposed to question and vet, you know, issues that come up with the school system and projects and financial issues, but we can't do that when we keep being limited further and further, whether it's asking questions or now it's making motions that we want to put limitations on.
Well, I happen to disagree with you. I think it actually sets the guidelines so that we move our meetings more efficiently and that everyone has a chance to make a motion and to second it and discuss it. If it's not seconded, we move on. So my intent was to make the meetings a little bit easier and...
Bob, I agree with your intent, and I think it's been played because what we need are work sessions, and I know you're tired, it sounds like a broken record, but I don't know a board that functions without work sessions. Every school board I've talked to, every member, they have work sessions to talk about what goes on the agenda. You know, if we just keep limiting communication, it's only going to get worse. You know, if we can talk about things in a work session, what we want on the agenda, the kind of directives we want the board, the superintendent to look into, you know, then we won't be bogged down with motions during the meeting. We will have an expedient meeting if we have met beforehand to talk about priorities and constituent concerns. Right now, we have no outlet for that. It has to happen in this meeting. Everything we do has to happen in this one meeting every month, and there's no way to keep it shorter unless you are going to, you know, continually put limitations on the board members.
Well, I just don't think that it's fair for motions to be made that are not on the agenda. It's not transparent, it's not, does not give board members the time to research, and certainly doesn't give the administration time, especially if we're going to be making decisions.
But all our motions are directed to the administration to look into things. We're, it's not like, you know, a finite decision.
Well, that's not necessarily true, because many of the motions that have been made are motions to take action and not necessarily to direct the administration.
But they're always refrained that way to direct the administration.
Well, this just simply makes it a little bit more clear as to how to handle those things.
And we do follow Robert's Rules of Orders, and you can make a motion anytime during the meeting.
Does the chairman want to make a motion that we, in the midst of a busy business, is trying to make a motion that we adjourn?
Is there a second?
We have a motion on the floor already.
Motion to adjourn to express it under all other business, so if it's the will of the body to adjourn under all other rules, then that's up to you guys.
Is there a second?
Point of information.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor of adjournance, see if I was saying aye.
Are they discussing?
Thank you.
All in favor of ending the meeting, please raise your hand. Okay.
I'll go.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
I think procedurally, again, Mr. Sazemore just asked whether you wanted to amend the motion or to be a policy brought back by the superintendent, if you just can respond to that.
Yes, I think that that's a good idea. I'll change that to a motion for recommendation for policy. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Yeah, just a point of clarification, I'm trying to read it, I'm going from number four to number five. So if I bring up a directive, I want us, I wish the school board or the administration would look into, and I get a second, then it's placed on the agenda for the next meeting?
If there's a majority vote.
If there's a majority vote, but there's no discussion about it at that particular point.
Well, you can discuss the motion, but not the merits. I mean, we're not, we're not making a decision whether to do that or not at that meeting.
Let me give a simple example. You make a motion if you'd like for the school system to look at providing field trips for AIG students to Washington DC. The board can give you a second and someone can say, "Well, clarify that for me. Is that every single school that has an AIG student, where is it? In Washington DC, you want to get it?" Anytime there's a board directive, there's going to be a need to clarify. There's going to be a need to ask questions and understand what it is the board member wants to do. Then, so you've got to have that discussion, but you wouldn't get into a discussion of, "Well, I could never vote for that," or "I'm opposed to that," and then it would be in one month before it would be an action item, which gets you superintendent time to look into it in a way, and use the public to calculate it.
And at that point, we decide that we, I mean, I'm a little confused. At that point, is that when we decide that, yes, we will, at the second meeting, we decide, yes, we want the administration to look into it? Or at the second meeting, we decide, yes, we need to do a field trip?
No, well, it's going to happen, yes, by a majority vote. The superintendent is going to know, the majority of the board is interested in this, and I will spend time on it, and a month from now, I'll be ready to discuss it. So in effect, a majority vote does require the superintendent to spend time looking into it during that next 30 days. Yes.
See, I would prefer, I, well, some things take longer than 30 days.
Well, if there's a rule on that, it just becomes an action item. It's your agenda, you're the board, you can even decide at that point, the 30 days makes no sense. When it's a board, it'll be an action item in two months. I mean, it doesn't, it's not rigid, it's just imperative that everyone, including the public, know seven days after the meeting, there's an issue, the board wants the board to look into, and then the majority wants to look into it, there's a 30-day timeframe for administration to look into it, and for the public to think about it in 20 years of meetings. There is a...
Chairman, the only thing that this motion that you now made, amended, that I requested, that's now before the board, as I understand it, is to simply have a proposed policy drafted so that there is no policy being adopted tonight.
Right.
That will be before the board at the earliest at the next meeting.
Yes.
For a discussion as to whether that policy is appropriate and should be adopted.
Yes.
And I would guess part of the theory with this is that when we do that, what the public has did is the recordation of the minutes of a particular meeting where he directed to give the superintendent something back, it's going to know that it's coming back to the public if they were paying attention to that particular minutes. That particular board meeting minutes would know, hey, next month, Mr. Craig has made a motion in the board, and Tim is bringing something back to look at AIG going to Washington DC, and so there's some transparency there, I guess, I don't know if that's correct or not, but some informational knowledge and notice that the public will have that that's coming in the next board meeting, two more meetings or whatever, depending on, I guess having to depend on the breadth of, and scope of whatever the record is, or whether that comes back to the 30 days, 20 days, whatever.
All in favor? Let's see if I was saying aye. Any others?
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Baldwin, you have a motion?
Yes, I have. As I stated earlier, I would like to move that we direct the administration to look into adding a column on the personnel report that would let the board members know if employees be approved, have relatives in the system, just as a matter of transparency.
Is there a second? Can I ask a question before, until we get a second? I can't ask a question of clarification. Oh, just to clarify, oh, it is, I'm curious how, can I get this right? How deep, how deep the family relationship that you're asking about is?
I think it is, Ms. Baldwin, with nepotism, which is generally meant to be just immediate family, not aunts and uncles and cousins.
What's the customary definition with the nepotism on a level like...
I didn't know what that was. Which is, yeah, I don't know what that is.
Which I believe, and I would have to go back and look, again, that's what we bring to mind, I believe is a direct lineal relationship of a child right there.
Right, and this is a mixture of...
Is there a second?
No second.
All in favor?
Wait, we haven't talked about it.
We don't have to talk about it.
Right, Hitler, I forgot, sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't put that in there. Basically, big companies, Walmart, look at any of those, they all have nepotism policies. Mission Hospital has one. We already collect this data on applicants, they're already asked, you know, if they're related to anybody in the system, and they have to tell the relationship. So this is nothing new. I'm just adding another data column, because we already get data on college degrees, whether there's the licensure status of applicant. It's just a transparency issue. It would not, you know, influence whether we're approving these people or not. I think it's a transparency issue that we need to address.
So you want them to disclose, the applicants disclose if they're related?
I believe that's already disclosed.
To anyone in the...
Ms. Lopez can tell us.
To anyone in the school system or to the...
No, this is just the confidential personnel report we receive for approval.
I know, but are you talking about relations with board members or are you talking about relations with all school boards?
I believe, maybe Ms. Lopez can help us define this, but what Mr. Campbell said was immediate family.
Do you want me to?
Yes.
There is a question on the study application that we used that asks if the employee is related to anyone in the school system, and employees check yes or no, and they'll listen to that. Now, it doesn't tell us who this person is or anything like that, that they will listen to that. I can tell you, Ms. Baldwin brought me something earlier in the board meeting, and I checked the Charlotte Mackenburg to see what they do. They only do it if it is at the level of board member or director of a school. They don't do it everywhere. And I have a couple of thoughts about it. One is our nepotism policy is broader, Mr. Campbell, than just immediate family. It actually goes to in-laws and things like that.
Who are directly supervised.
Directly supervised, that's right, that's right. That's what our policy provides. But...
And that's one thing to do is to ultimately put on the personnel report. Well, we decided you can't be directly supervised, right?
We don't hire someone.
Yeah, so we only have to have this policy.
Right, we don't hire someone who's directly supervised by someone who follows that definition of a relationship. It will be a nightmare to try to keep up with everyone who's related to anyone, because me, you know, my experience with the community is that people are related to a lot of people, and if you add that to the personnel report, I think we're going to get a lot of stuff that might not be totally, it might not be important to make it harder.
Right, and I think this motion is important to emphasize, it's just to direct the administration to look into this, and the example that Ms. Lopez gave from Charlotte Mackenburg, I think is a good one, that they only go to a certain level with this. But this is a big transparency issue, and I think if we looked at models from other corporations as well as not just school systems, you know, you would see that this is, this is an issue that, that most people are, you know, being transparent about.
All in favor? Just by the way.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I'm getting going. Mr. Transparency Report, help me, Mr. Campbell, if you would, but that report and those types of items are not, it's not for public, you mean, who's the transparency report?
That's for the board members. We have a responsibility to approve these people. I take it very seriously, and I...
I ask Mr. Campbell a question. Can I get an answer from Mr. Campbell, please? I just, my question, Mr. Campbell.
I apologize, I didn't understand.
I think the motion is the confidential personnel report that you received, close session. And I think what you know is we already have the policy that prohibits any direct supervision by the board. But Ms. Baldwin's motion is that it's part of the confidential report that you folks received prior to the board meeting, that the administration look into identifying if there are family relationships. It sounds like that she's fine with the administration deciding where to draw that line and coming back to that. So no, it's not the policy that's being...
I mean, there's been some issues that have come up in the last two years where we were voting on the superintendent's son, and it was never revealed to us, and I just felt like, I mean, I have no problem. Please don't interrupt, I have the floor.
When she names the superintendent's son.
Ms. Baldwin, I...
She's going on.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I mean, I have no problem with voting for that person with a relationship. I just felt like that needed to be transparent, it needs to be open. Okay, that's how I feel.
I have a mission to all board members, saying that somebody works for the school system is fine, but when you bring up an employment hiring decision, the board cannot discuss that, and I just warn all of you of the impression that you might get after a hiring decision, that it can't be discussed and people can't be told the details, that's just a general call.
Well, I wasn't, I'm sorry, I really did not intend to misrepresent anything, just to point out that overall, there's been relationships that have not been revealed, even though the board members...
Mr. Chairman, could we call for a question, please?
All right, all of you have a motion and a second. Is there, all in favor, to signify I was saying aye?
Aye.
And all opposed?
Respeak the motion.
All right, we have a board directive for the administration to look into a hiring policy, adding, or adding to our personnel report if there's any relations, relationships with other employees. to our personnel report if there's any relations, relationships with other employees. All in favor, please signify by the saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
I have another motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, move, we adjourn.
Second. All in favor of adjournance, please signify by the saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
We adjourn.